Today is April the 27th, 2020, and the time is 9 o'clock a.m. I would ask that if you are not a commissioner, that you mute your cellphone unless you are asked a question or it happens to be during public comment. Obviously Kara and Kelly are exempt from that. You guys, if you have any questions or anything, just chime in. So we will not say the pledge of allegiance today because we're on a teleconference. So I would ask the clerk to the board to conduct the roll. Thank you.
Commissioner Flower?
Present.
Commissioner Kanda?
Here.
Commissioner Prince?
Yeah.
Attorney Clint Smith?
Present.
And clerk to the board Kelly Camper, present.
Thank you ma'am, appreciate that. Audience introductions, I would ask that if you were on the call this morning, you would introduce yourself. It'd be a little awkward, so we'll just take our time and we'll get through everybody. Go ahead, please. Kara, would you like to start?
Kara Evans, BRCC Admin Assist.
Thank you.
Oh, Bogel, Economic Development.
Elliot Jackson, Whatnoton Tribune.
Hi, this is Vernon Roth, IT hosting the conference.
This is Alyssa Lavinger, we have Meredith Nichols and Alex Anderson.
Kathy Garcia, Senator Cory Gardner's office.
Oh, good morning Kathy, how are you?
I am fine, how about you?
Yeah, we appreciate you being on, thank you.
Cindy Flower, EPR Coordinator.
Anyone else on the line that would like to introduce themselves? Vernon, do you have a record of the number of calls?
Uh, yes sir. Let me add it up real quick. Besides myself, there's 14 additional people on the call.
Okay.
That's what I count too, so we have everybody.
Okay. Yeah, that's my count as well. Anyone else care to introduce themselves? Uh, Vernon, I would ask if somebody does come on and you see that on your screen, you're welcome to ask them to introduce themselves.
Okay, thank you sir.
You bet. Alright, we'll move on. Gentlemen, amendments to the agenda?
I have none.
Commissioner Kanda?
None here.
And Commissioner Prince?
Yes sir.
Okay, uh, I have, uh, some agenda items or amendments that I'd like to introduce. I would move that we strike appointing a new health board. Is there a second?
A second, ma'am.
It's been moving to second it to amend the agenda by striking, appointing a new health board discussion. I would interject my thoughts on this if you're interested gentlemen. I think that given the circumstances of where we're at with the COVID-19, the issue that it would probably be more appropriate to wait until a later time to have a conversation and consideration of this. I just think with our social distancing and all of that business that it might make it awkward and cumbersome to try to interview and meet with interested parties that would want to serve on the health board. So, uh, I'm moving to strike today and not postpone it. I think we can bring it up later if that's the goodst pleasure.
May I make a comment before we vote?
Yes, so there, yeah, sure, absolutely, other discussion?
Yes, thank you, this is Jay. I just want to make sure that the appointment of staff for the, for the, um, new health board, is that something we'll be able to discuss? I have a, a medical doctor who reached out to me and would like to be a part of that, and at some point I'd like to recommend her to join.
Okay, uh, yeah, that is still on the agenda, so that would not pertain to here.
Okay, sounds great, thank you.
Yeah, you're talking about the task force, uh...
No, I'm actually talking about the Board of Health.
Oh, okay, Board of Health, yeah.
My understanding, yeah, my understanding is we have up to five slots, um, three of us constitute three people. Um, just FYI, the lady is Dr. Barbara Sutton Phillips, reached out to me, said she'd like to help. I'd love to have her, um, a further discussion as to whether she is appropriate to join the Board of Health as a number four member, and then maybe find another medical person.
Okay.
Uh, this is, can I jump in here?
Yes, you may.
Uh, we can't do that, we either have a board of five, uh, private citizens or three county commissioners, we can't mix and match.
Okay.
Yes, correct, thank you, I was just...
Hey, hold on a second, I, I, I'm in, I have a comment too.
Okay, hold...
Flo down.
Go ahead.
The comment I would have, and you guys, uh, it's a proposal that's on the floor, it's not a given that we're gonna do it, first of all, and secondly, Clint is 100% right, neither all or none, and that's something that we have to vote on, and you, and we can't discuss, you know, we shouldn't be getting that into that right now. I agree.
Okay, this is discussion of amending the agenda, so, um...
I agree, we should, uh, that...
The point is well taken, Bill. Any further discussion on amend, on amending the agenda to strike consideration of appointing a new health board? Hearing none, we'll pursue the vote, all in favor say aye. Commissioner Prince?
Aye.
Commissioner Kanda?
Aye.
And Commissioner Flower votes aye. Thank you. Uh, the next agenda amendment to the agenda I have, um, is I will move to add on today's agenda, a discussion creating a health board advisory committee. Is there a second?
A, a second, that, I think that would go along with my suggestion earlier.
Okay. Uh, it's been moved and seconded to add to the agenda, discussion of creating a health board advisory committee. Again, I would share my thoughts, number one, Clint, I believe this is in order because it's not a action item, it's just a discussion item, so I feel comfortable in adding that at the last minute. If it was a action item, I would have a problem with that.
Well, actually, I think if the health board, Board of Health wants an advisory committee, that's for the Board of Health to decide, not the county commissioner, so I, I think that should be an agenda item for the Board of Health.
Okay, your point is well taken.
And this is Kanda, same, I had the same issue, uh, and Clint hit it first, but, uh, it is, um, a, uh, item for the health board, it's also an item that I don't think if it even was our, I, I think it's an action that would not be allowed because there was a 24-hour notice to get people that might be interested in contributing to that, to that discussion. So we gotta make sure when we put it on the health board, it's, uh, agenda, it's time to make it right.
Yeah, as I indicated, I think the point was well taken, I would move to withdraw my motion to add to the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 And Commissioner Flower votes aye. Thank you, um... And then my third amendment to the agenda would be, um, let me just check my notes here real quick. So, I'm gonna move to strike the first item on the agenda, consideration of appointing staff for the task force, because I believe that will be covered, uh, or either one, I don't care, I know Charles is on the call, I was gonna say that will be considered under the last item, um, but we could, we could include those two items together, that's my point. So I think one of them needs to go, and we can incorporate, uh, both considerations that, under either one. So gentlemen, I would, before I make that motion, I would entertain some discussion about that. Am I making myself clear about what I was after here?
Yeah, it, uh, look, it's probably, we, we treated it under one item when we had the workshop, and probably the same to have together as one item makes sense.
Right, yeah, because it's, we've got it on twice, so if you're okay gentlemen, I would move to strike consideration of the task force goals and objectives, and cover that under appointing staff for the task force. Is there a second?
Thank you.
Thank you sir. Bear with me, I'm just making these corrections as we go. It's been moved and seconded to strike the item, uh, last item on the agenda, consideration of the task force goals and objectives, and to have that conversation during this task force item at, uh, earlier in the agenda, so further discussion. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Prince, Commissioner Kanda?
Aye.
And Commissioner Flower votes aye. Motion carries, so let the record show that consideration of the goals and objectives, of the task force goals and objectives has been deleted from the agenda as well.
Tom?
Any further, yes, go ahead Kelly.
You, um, you were talking about the task force goals and objectives being the last on the agenda, there's two more items after that.
Great. Uh, why would you tell us what those are, because obviously I don't have them.
So it's approving of the CC, CCEDC MOU?
Okay, hold on just a second, please.
There's, there are three objectives, including the task force goals and MOU, and then task one procurement package, and I'm not sure what that is, thank you.
Okay, go ahead Kelly, I'm ready.
And then the next one is approval of task one procurement package.
Okay, so, uh, I wanna make sure we get this right, so your agenda shows approving CCEDC, go ahead.
Um, MOU, and it's actually, it's Custer County and CCEDC MOU.
Okay, thank you. When did this new, um, agenda come out, I don't have those.
That went out Friday about, oh, it was about 5 o'clock.
Kara, Kara, that's the most recent one available.
I sent it after our meeting on Friday with, about the fiber, um, fiber ban.
Okay.
All right, so the old web, uh, website.
Okay, and the second one, Kelly, go ahead.
Approval of task one procurement package. That was it, those were two separate ones.
Okay, just the two, and I, you said three, I'm sorry.
Above that, um, above it was the task force goals and objectives, that's what she was referring to, the goals and objectives, the MOU, and the task one package are all three, you know, in order at the end.
Okay, um, so we've struck the task force goals and objectives, uh, we could, all that during, uh...
No, no, I thought we struck the task force appointment of staff at the front of the agenda.
Kelly, would you... No, the motion, the motion was to strike the consideration of the task force goals and objectives, and to include that in the appointment of staff for the task force. Uh, so I find ourselves in a little predicament here, uh, only in respect with, uh, Mr. Bogel being on, uh, now we have an agenda item for his group at the first item of agenda, and then two at the last. Mr. Bogel, are you okay with that?
I'm used to it.
So, um, go ahead.
So what did we, we struck, uh, we struck the goals and objectives, that's what we're gonna...
That's correct. With the intent that that discussion would occur during the first item of business.
Okay, we'll have to make a motion if we so then, right?
No, that was in the motion. That was in the motion to strike was to include it in the, uh, consideration of appointing staff for the task force. Kelly, is that how you had it, or am I...
Yes, no, that's how it was.
That makes sense then.
Alright. Uh, Kel, thanks for bringing those other two items up, obviously I am not on the most recent agenda items, early agendas, so, for clarification, then let me just run down through the new business item before we leave this. Uh, consideration of appointing staff for the task force, and, uh, goals and objectives. Second one, consideration of the letter of commendation. Third is consideration of the Justice Center RFP responses. Fourth, consideration of amending the landfill RFP. Fifth, consideration of waiving a conflict of interest for the attorney. Sixth, discussion of partial reopen of the courthouse. Seventh, approving Custer County CCEDC MOU agreement. And eighth, approval of task force, or task one procurement package. Is that what you gentlemen have now?
Yes, now I do.
Okay, alright, good. Okay, any further, uh, amendments to the agenda? Okay, we'll move on, thank you. Thanks Kelly.
You're welcome.
Uh, approval of the amendments, we do not have any to approve today, uh, commissioner items, Commissioner Kanda, would you like to begin?
Sure, it's been, uh, busy in the last, what is it, four working days, whatever it's been, we, uh, life goes on, still, airport, the AWAS contract is underway now, and, uh, as well as our work with the key hangers that they're gonna be putting in, so that's, uh, moving along. Um, we'll bring up, as it progresses, I'll bring in the board up to date on progress tomorrow. Um, the, uh, task force, uh, as we discussed already, uh, discussion, workshop we had along with the MOU, I thought went well, and, and we'll see the fruits of that today. We had a Board of Health meeting that I thought was, uh, successful as well, is, we had a, a good job of presenting waivers, uh, to the current, now the current order that, uh, is underway in Colorado. First phase of our recovery can get started, hopefully we're waiting for that reply, and I hope, uh, we'll hear a bit more about timing on that later. Uh, and then, uh, they received a press release, I looked at it actually, from Fremont County, on, uh, they're opening all their county buildings as well, because, uh, they've already done that, under certain restrictions, and I think it would be good when we get into our discussion to discuss a press release, uh, to our county as well, so that everybody understands, and I know we'll get into that discussion, on how we're gonna go about getting back to business partially, at least, in this new world. And, right now it's all a double letter conversation for the law.
Thank you. Commissioner Prince?
Thank you, um, I, too, attended the, um, the CCEDC workshop, uh, the stakeholder meeting, and then the CC, um, update, uh, on Friday, about what was going on with, um, OEM and the updates there. Um, I dealt with a, or had some conversation about some employee issues this morning, uh, spoke to multiple constituents, um, about not being able to hear me, that's why I mentioned to Vern, is this best, the best format, and the question came up of how long will we continue to be doing a phone conversation, so, uh, I'm not gonna prep other issues on how to do this, we'll wait and see how that goes. Um, I think that's about all I had, I've been working with, um, uh, several people who have talked to me about the Board of Health and how that works, and, um, I, I was under the misguided information that we could have three commissioners and two outsiders, that's obviously not correct, so, um, not gonna pursue that at this point, but I'll look forward to the guidance committee to move forward on that, so, that's basically what I've been up to.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Um, yeah, April 22nd, I attended the policy group meeting teleconference, uh, April 23rd, I participated in the, uh, Upper Arkansas Council of Governments Workforce Teleconference, um, I also attended, of course, the BOCC workshop teleconference on the 24th, so, that's kind of my calendar, let me go to, um, a couple other items I want to bring up to the group, uh, to the commissioners. We've had a request for search and rescue to move into the Office of Emergency Management, uh, I know you gentlemen had received that as well. I did speak with, uh, the Director of OEM, and she was, uh, fine with that, she had no objection for those folks to start moving into that office, there was an agreement that her moving out of the office would occur over time, uh, and they, the search and rescue folks were perfectly willing to do that. Uh, they indicated very clearly that they were, that it was not an effort to try to, uh, expel her from that office, they wanted to, uh, make a request to us that, that we would, uh, consider allowing them to go into that, um, building prior to, to us considering anyone else doing that, so, it was just an effort on their part to, uh, indicate they wanted, uh, wanted us to know that that was their intent, I can read you part of that if we need to, I've got the letter here in front of me, um, but if you gentlemen have read it, then I don't think it's necessary.
Have I made a comment, sir?
Go ahead, yes.
Thank you, yes, I did read that, and I'm glad you brought it up. Um, what concerns me a little bit, one of the convincing arguments to allow our Director of OEM to move into the public health nurse, nurses' office, offices, was that that room would be available for family gatherings and comfort and care and things like that during a mission. Um, when I read the, the request, I was thinking, it sounds to me like they just want to make another office out of that, that's gonna defeat one of the main reasons I agreed to move, um, Meredith into the office with Alyssa. Do we know how that's going to occur, or...
Yes.
...come off the table?
Yes, we do, uh, the letter from search and rescue dated April 23rd, uh, number six on that letter was to, uh, provide private grieving and counseling area for family and friends of subjects, so they intend still to use that for that, uh, purpose.
Okay, 'cause it sounded like, I, I read that, but it sounded like they wanted to move a regular office into that space, and that had some concerns to me.
Can I, this is Meredith, can I kinda iron that out?
Yes, go ahead, go ahead Meredith.
Good morning gentlemen.
Good morning.
Um, so, so my office, um, is split into two, like, the, the office upstairs in search and rescue, so, my assumption, and I believe this is how it's been in the, in the history of missions, is where the, the first part bears rooms for like that grieving area, and then that, that second part can be the storage with all the shelving and, and office spots, does that make sense?
Correct, yes, absolutely, yep. Yeah, Commissioner, Commissioner Prince, I don't see, uh, I'm, I don't see any concern about this, uh, I think it can continue to be, uh, used in both manners.
Okay, Commissioner Flower, I have a question.
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I, I know in the past that, uh, it's been used with OEM and the SAR guys, uh, as well, uh, in the past, and I don't have a problem with that necessarily. Uh, I do, uh, wanna remind everybody, we are two separate chains of command, OEM works for the commissioners, the, uh, Public Health Agency, of course, is under the health board, uh, anyway, uh, had we, uh, where, where is Meredith permanent office supposed to be in the future? In, in the SAR building, or in the Public Health Agency? What did we agree on? I don't know that we have, uh, have made a, an agreement as, for the permanency of it, I don't think I'm already the temporary good candidate.
Yes, we did vote to allow OEM to move into public health.
Right, but I thought that was, uh, for, for now, I don't, and maybe I need to go pull that up, but, uh, that may have been what we did, I'm just refreshing my mind here.
Yes, we did vote on that, I believe this is the July 15th meeting, hold on and I'll look.
Yeah, was it that far ago, it can't be that long ago? That's...
No, it's April 15th.
It, um... It wasn't July 15th, April, yeah. What did we say, so that we're, we're consistent with...
Well, I'm looking, if, if you'll give me just a second, I'm, I'm researching that as we speak.
Good deal.
Tom, it's March 31st meeting.
Pardon me?
March 31st meeting.
Okay, thank you, I was back to, uh, the April 7th meeting, and it was not on that agenda, so March 31st is when we made that decision.
And there was a motion.
Yes, yeah, it was, uh, it was on the agenda, and we voted to allow that move.
Was it difficult, what, how did that read, Kelly?
It, uh, let me find it again. Um, motion by Commissioner Flower, second by Commissioner Prince, to authorize the Office of Emergency Management to move to the Public Health Agency.
And that was it, no time, it was, that was a permanent move then? Okay, but it didn't state how we were sharing or splitting the, uh, the SAR building? Like, as Meredith mentioned, is that right?
That mo, that motion did not, no.
So does Meredith have two offices then?
Well, currently she does, yes, she's not moved out of that office at search and rescue.
Okay.
And then the other item, uh, I wanted to bring up gentlemen, oh, when it rains it pours, uh, the, the third heating, ventilation, and air conditioning unit is in the process of going out of functioning order, that's on top of the courthouse, um, so I have not reached out to anybody about that issue, I was made aware of that when our contractor installed the two new HVAC units, the RTUs, uh, I personally heard that, uh, third unit start up, and, uh, obviously there's some bearing issues, a lot of squealing noise coming off of that, it's got, it's gotten worse, I spoke to Mike Halpin about it, um, he is certainly concerned as well, there's no question that it's gonna have to be replaced, so, um, I would, Cheryl would certainly entertain some discussion about that, uh...
So, uh...
I would, go ahead, go ahead.
So, it, uh, it's operating, but it's making a lot of noise, or is it not operating at all? at all now?
Uh, it is struggling to operate, yes. How, to what percent, uh, success it's having, I have no idea.
Okay, um, and so, we're gonna have to decide, uh, at some point to replace it? Uh, are, are you looking to do that now or at the next meeting? We've got another meeting coming up here, yeah?
Uh, yeah, the reason, one of the reasons I brought it up, Commissioner Candace, I think it definitely needs to be on the agenda through the 30th.
Yeah, that would be a good thing, absolutely.
I don't feel comfortable in entertaining a motion during Commissioner Items, 'cause this action item will, uh, 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 you know, will obviously have a dollar amount of some sort attached to it, so I think it needs to be considered officially during the next meeting.
That's a good idea, and the 30th is a Thursday, right?
Yep. Yes, last business day of the month. Commissioner Prince, are you okay with, uh, putting that on through the 30th?
I am, sir, I'm just, I'm curious, because I don't remember, what was the cost of the prior, um, units that we got? And where I'm going with this, is this something that, uh, will need to go out as an RFP to contractors, or is this something we'll be able to, um, just vote on as a repair item?
Uh, again, I could take the time to go back on to the agenda items when we made that discussion. I'll throw out a figure, I'm sure I'll be off by a factor of 10 or 20, but seemed to me like it was $17,000, Jay, uh, that was to replace the two big units. I don't anticipate this unit to be anywhere near that. It certainly could be more than 5,000.
Okay, well, probably'll need to put it out as an RFP, but I'm fine putting it on the agenda, 'cause that's really the question at the moment, so, let's discuss that.
Uh, yeah, so, Ms. Kara, I would request that we add to the April 30th agenda, uh, consideration of replacing, and I'm sorry, gentlemen, I do not remember the name of that, I'm just gonna call it the third rooftop HVAC unit. Typically referred to as an RTU, a rooftop unit. Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate that. I believe that's all I have under Commissioner Items. Uh, Upper Ark Water Report, anything, Commissioner Candace?
Not, nothing from my point of view right now.
Nor do I. Uh, Commissioner Prince?
Uh, I, I'll just add that the town of West Cliff has chosen to, uh, drop out of the, um, Opposition Group as the county has.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Okay, nothing else, we'll move on, Attorney Items?
Uh, since our last Commissioners' meeting on April 21st, I attended the Board of Health meeting on the 22nd, and the workshop with Economic Development on the 24th, and that's all I have to report.
All right, thank you, sir, appreciate that. Administrative Assistant Items?
Um, the only thing I have is I have been receiving some bids for the landfill RFP, and I've, so far, all the ones I have received have been electronically, so I will just hold on to them and then send them to you, Clint, if that does.
Um, all right, the bids are supposed to be in writing in sealed envelopes, I think.
No, we wrote in the RFP because of the COVID-19, uh, that they could be submitted electronically as well.
Okay, that's fine, then just send them to me, and, um, you wanna put them on the April 30th agenda for reading them, or what day was it supposed to be? I don't remember.
Uh...
They were due thi-
Well, the deadline, go ahead, Commissioner.
No, go ahead, I didn't, I thought he, he was done, huh? Uh, I thought they were due, uh, today, I think, the 27th, is that what we had?
That's correct, what I thought.
Yep, so, it looks, we could, I don't know, it's, what's the protocol? We can read them today, or we're gonna wait till the 30th?
No, the RFP, I could, I could pull that up, uh, hold, give me just a second here. The landfill, RFP has a date of consideration, um, trying to choose my words carefully so we don't start talking about the Justice Center RFP, if you know what I mean.
That's right, we don't want that to happen again.
No, we've been down that road, so, just give me a second here, gentlemen, if you would, here. I'll pull that data, um, so, today was the deadline for the submittals, um, the award of the excavation contract notification is May 5th, so obviously, we have some work to do between now and then. So, Clint, I agree, I think that probably needs to be on the agenda officially to read those, uh, consider those bids on the 30th. Gentlemen, would you agree with that?
Yeah, I think that's great, uh, in the meantime, uh, in the past, I think we've had, uh, and it depends on how we score them, uh, a workshop or something, I, I can't remember how we handled it, uh, in order to evaluate them before the meeting, but we can-
No, we did not, uh, we cannot, uh...
No, man.
We'll have to read them publicly, and then, if we wanna postpone a decision, we can do that, but right now, we're scheduled to make a decision by, uh, the 5th of May.
And that's fair, that's, I, I understand that, so, that's good.
Sir, do you want me, do you want me to read them on the 30th, and you'll make a decision on the 5th?
Well, that's what our RFP indicated, um, obviously, these are uncharted waters we're in here, it's not likely we can all sit in the same room and go through those, so, typically, I mean, in the past, we've had you read those to us, Clint, and then, uh, then we made a decision after hearing all the RFPs. Uh, I wouldn't have a problem with, when we read those for sake of time, is to kinda have, allow Clint to go through, pull out the appropriate information and present that, but we probably shouldn't read it word for word, technically.
Well, I generally read the, the, uh, bids word for word.
Yes.
So, I can do that, if Kara will send them to me, I can read them on Thursday, as long as it's on the agenda, and then officially, the way we do it if it's a written bid, we share it, uh, with the three of you, so you can all study those bids in detail, and then vote on May 5th.
Right, I would think after we read those, uh, on the 30th, then, then you could forward, that's those, that, those documents. Gentlemen, would you agree with that assessment?
Absolutely, and that's where, what the crux of my question was prior to that, 'cause in the past, that's what we've done, and that's a good thing to do, uh, to-
No.
-get some time to digest it, or if it looks obvious, that's, and we can discuss that on the 30th as well, I guess.
Can I make a comment?
Uh, yes, go ahead.
Thank you, um, we've never had a workshop to discuss an RFP, and-
No, no, I'm not, I, I, I'm, I'm mixing it up, I'm sorry, Clint, or, uh, it didn't call for the discussion, so...
That's, that's, that is past.
I, I-
I agree.
I'm, I'm with you, um, Bill, I, it, it wasn't the point, I just was thinking, the process we're discussing makes perfectly good sense, but that's really not what my question is. My question is later on the agenda, we have, um, amending the landfill RFP. Sounds to me like it's well beyond time to amend an RFP if the results are back in, so I question the legitimacy of amending it.
Yes, Jay, you bring up a good point, and there's a reason I didn't suggest to strike that as well, and we can get to that when we get to that portion of the agenda.
Okay.
Give me just a second here, gentlemen, my computer looks like it's a book. Yeah, Kara, would you add then, please, to the, uh, April 30th agenda, um, reading the submitted proposals or bids, now I guess they are, uh, reading of submitted, uh, landfill bids, and then, um, gentlemen, we've also received a hard copy, I believe, uh, Kelly has a copy as well, so we'll need to get that to council. Is that correct, Kelly?
Yeah, I'll send that to Clint today, and I'll, um, since this one was dropped in the Dropbox, I'll check that, since those bids are good, they can submit them till 4:00 PM today, I'll check that box today-
Okay.
-at closing to make sure there's no more in there.
And gentlemen, are you okay with Kelly scanning those and sending those to the Attorney electronically, or do you want her to make arrangements to give those to him in person?
I think she can scan them, I don't have a problem with it, I think we got a good plan. I'm fine with scanning, I'm fine with it.
Uh, Attorney Smith?
Oh, that's fine, I, otherwise, she'd have to come here, or I'd have to go there, so I'd just send her to receive it electronic.
Okay, and because we said they could be submitted either way, I'm comfortable with her, uh, scanning those and sending those to you, obviously, uh, Kelly, that's, it's a confidential document, uh, until they're read, so certainly, please do not send them to us as well.
I'm pretty, I'm pretty, uh, I'm pretty good about that.
Okay, I thought you were just gonna say, "I'm pretty," and you were gonna leave it at that.
No, I had a word in mind, but I couldn't remember it, it went out of my brain.
Okay, all right, gentlemen, we okay on that, uh, uh, process? Go ahead, sir. Clint, did you have a comment?
No, I thought Jay said something.
Okay. I heard an "uh," and I thought somebody was gonna interject, so, okay, so, to sum up, then, we will, uh, get these documents to Attorney Smith, uh, it is on the agenda for April the 30th, we will go through those bids, and then we will have until the 5th, or we can, I'm assuming, then we'll make a decision. So, maybe on the 5th, uh, we also, Kara, add an agenda item of, uh, selecting a contractor for the landfill project.
All right, I have that on there.
Okay, thank you. Attorney Smith, anything else?
No, no, nothing else.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we're clear on the RFP. Um, Kara, did you have anything else under Admin Assistant?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, uh, did you tell me you thought we had four or five electronic submittals?
Yes, I need to look again, but I think it's been about four or five.
Okay, and so, we might be looking at, uh, five or six max. Okay, very good, thank you. Uh, at this time, we'll move on to public comment, um, are there any comments from the public pertaining to anything other than the agenda items listed?
Uh, yes, question please, Bob Sinderhoff speaking, uh, I'd like to know-
Go ahead.
...what was done, I'm sorry I was late, I had a previous appointment, but for the Upper Arkansas Water Conservancy District, uh, report, um, was there something in writing on that issue, or any changes, uh, that I should be aware of, for the people's-
Okay, yeah, great, great question, um, there was no report under the Upper Arkansas, uh, Report Agenda Item, uh, Commissioner Prince, uh, had a comment about that, and I would ask him to repeat that.
Uh, I will, um, West Cliff, the town of West Cliff, uh, discussed, uh, their, be part of the opposition, and decided that, they chose to, um, not continue to be part of the opposition group, and they are, uh, withdrawing that.
Okay.
So, the Commissioners-
Go ahead.
The Commissioners are withdrawing, and, uh, the town of West Cliff are withdrawing? Am I hearing that correct?
That's correct, there's a s, yes, there's a substantial list of the opposers that have been dropped from that lawsuit.
Okay, do you have a list of those?
Uh, I do, it'll take me just a second to, and actually, uh-
Can you just forward that to me?
Uh, yes, I can make a note of that, Bob, sure, uh...
And we are gonna-
Best I-
-have any representative to the Upper Ark?
Uh...
And have it on the agenda, agenda item?
I have been, I have been attending those Upper Ark meetings, yes, sir.
Okay, are you gonna-
And I would, go ahead.
I was gonna say, you know, on, on your agenda here for today, and-
Yes.
So, you've always had that report, is that gonna stay as a report on a monthly basis, or every time you have a meeting, or whatever you do?
Uh, that is correct, that is a standing item on our BOCC agenda.
Okay, thank you.
You bet, and Bob, I just wanna comment, uh, I will send you the latest legal notification that I've gotten from the Attorney for Upper Ark, uh, I don't believe that date has actually, uh, or that list of names has actually been formalized by the Water Court Judge yet, but the, the, uh, document has been sent out that, that lists the, the opposers that were going to be dropped, so I will forward you that.
Yeah, I understand that process, so that'd be-
Okay, all right, yeah, sure, yeah, I'm just saying, I don't believe the judge has ruled finally on that, but I'll give you my latest.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Further public comment? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on, thank you. Uh, any unfinished business, gentlemen?
I have one item, sir.
Go ahead.
Thank you, um, I've been in contact with Tom Shepard, who is, uh, a board member for the, uh, the Hospital District, West Coast County Hospital District, he's also in charge of the ambulance service, um, I reached out to him to ask where are we on, uh, their proposed letter that they sent to us, uh, regarding ambulance service, mostly for the Eastern County, uh, Wetmore and surrounding areas. Uh, he's under the impression he's waiting for us to respond to him, uh, the letter that he sent, so, um, I just wanted to mention to you that I'd like to put that on to a future agenda, maybe April 30th or May 5th, whichever one, uh, you guys feel is appropriate, but I think, uh, the ball has been in our court for a little while, and of course, with all that's going on, I could see why it would fall through the cracks, but I would like to get that moving again, to make sure that we have continuous ambulance service with the Eastern County, eastern portion of our county.
Yeah, can I have a-
That's great.
-on that, well, uh-
Go ahead.
Yeah, real quick, I agree, uh, with Jay, um, I've had several questions, as recently as the day before yesterday, on where are we with the ambulance, and, uh, and then it dawned on me, we, we kinda left it hanging, uh, I think we oughta wait until the, uh, what is it, the May meeting, because we need some time to resurrect that, I think, and figure out, uh, what's, you know, let, let's, let's get some time here to get, get it under our belt, have a good discussion, and that would be-
Okay.
-but they is May, are we, I don't remember.
Pardon me, ma'am, I didn't understand you, I didn't understand your question, Bill.
I was wondering, uh, I don't, I don't have the calendar in front of me, the date that we're going to meet in May, is I think it was May 5th and 6th, isn't it?
May 5th, we've already voted to, uh, cancel the May 6th meeting.
Yeah, so, May 6th-
Yeah, I don't have a strong feeling either way, gentlemen, I'm fine with going to the 5th, uh, Jay, are you okay with that, or do you feel a urgency?
No, I don't feel an urgency, and the reason I don't is because the West Coast County Hospital District is sending ambulances for every 911 call going down to the eastern portion- District is sending ambulances for every 911 call going down to the eastern portion, those folks are covered, um, ambulances are going, um, they've also hired a couple of paraleg- uh, not paralegals, I'm sorry, paramedics, who, um, uh, each of their ambulances now has a paramedic on it, according to Tom, and I'll invite him to the May 5th meeting, so that he can bring us up to date, and we can discuss it at that time, but I just wanna assure the people who are listening in that ambulances are rolling, so the entire county, we're just trying to work out the mechanics now, of how that should be handled in the future, mostly payments, that kinda thing. But I don't want people to feel that ambulance service is not being covered, it is, so I just wanted to stress that.
Okay, perfect. Uh, truly, and with respect, I appreciate you bringing this item up, it doesn't really fall under unfinished item of business, but it was appropriate that, that we have this discussion. I would ask Ms. Kara if she would add on the May 5th agenda, uh, consideration of the letter sent from Bob Tobin, Bob Tobin, just, sorry, I'm rambling. Kara, if you would add consideration of the clinic's letter of EMS.
Okay, I have it.
I don't, I don't have that letter in front of me, so I can't give you a date that that letter was written, but I'll, I'll clear that up with you before then, we'll get it on the agenda.
It's April 15th.
Thank you, sir. Uh, consideration of the April 15th letter from the West Custer County Hospital District. And Commissioner Prince, I have a question for you by May.
Yes, sir.
You indicated that Tom Shepard is now the director of the EMS, is that correct?
I don't know if that's his official title. Um, Ms. Candelaria is now no longer part of, part of the group that is handling the EMS, she has moved on, so, yes, Tom is in charge of that, whether he, what title he has, I don't know, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you, appreciate that.
Hey, Meredith-
About this-
Um-
Go ahead.
The manager of EMS right now is Rob.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, yeah.
Yeah.
He's the interim manager, correct?
Yeah, Tom is the spokesperson for the board.
Okay, all right, thank you for that clarification, appreciate it. Anything else under unfinished business, gentlemen?
No, but I, I, that did something that's not appropriate for unfinished business, I meant to bring it up under, uh, commissioner items, uh, and this discussion reminds me, uh, you are, I think, Tom, aren't you, the point of contact for the Saddle Club? For the commissioners, is it, or Fairgrounds, or whatever?
Well-
I need to, here, here's, here's my question. Uh, the meeting that we have planned for the fourth, with the strategy meeting with the mayors, uh, I, I went in after Alyssa did a good job of taking a look at the town hall, and we could get, uh, single chairs in there, possibly, uh, up to nine or so, but the suggestion was to use the Saddle Club building, uh, for our meeting, which has the ability to project, uh, you know, the charts and that kinda thing, and has plenty of room to make sure that, uh, up to 10 or 11, 12 people, uh, excuse me, we're only gonna have around 11, at most, probably nine. So I'm wondering if, uh, you wanna get ahold of whoever out there, give me a point of contact number, I'll go take a look, and I'll get Alyssa to, uh, take a look at how to, how to set that up, so we can have that meeting on the fourth, that we've been discussing.
Okay. Uh, no, I'm not point of contact for that, uh, but I would think probably Alyssa being a board member for the, uh, Saddle Club could probably give you an appropriate name of who, uh, uh, who does, talk to schedule that building.
Yeah, that would be great, if we could, and Alyssa then, I think Alyssa's on, Alyssa, if, uh, you wanna take a look at how to set that up with me, that'd be great.
Yeah, thanks for you guys, no, I have two things to tell you. First of all, Betsy Banks is who you'd need to talk to, and I can get you her, um, information, her contact information. Um, but regardless, we're still in the safer at home, so there still can be only 10 or less people.
Yeah, that, that's understood, that's good. It'd be a lot easier if we're there.
Um, the, yeah, it's, it's semantics, but it, the, the order actually states public gatherings of 10 persons or more.
Okay.
So really, I mean, it's back and, kinda back and forth, but really, it shouldn't be more than nine.
Okay, thank you. Can you guys deal with that offline then?
Yeah.
Alyssa, will you work with Mr. Kanda and get that, well, you've given him the name, but you didn't provide him the information for that?
Yep, for sure.
And then, uh, okay, yep, Commissioner Kanda, then you will pursue that and let us know in, uh, ahead of time-
Yeah, I'll put it-
Where we're gonna meet.
Yep, that's the plan, that's why I wanted to bring it up, because that, that came late.
Thank you. So right now, I have that broadband meeting on 1:00, at 1:00, uh-
That's right.
And, um, Commissioner, Counselor Smith, a question for you, we really need to post, schedule that and post that as a special BOCC meeting.
If all three, excuse me, if all three of you are gonna be present, yes?
Yes, and I believe that is the plan, so Kara, we need to, uh, the chair, I can't remember if we've officially done this, 'cause we're waiting for the date, time, and location, uh, but I would-
Right.
The chair, the chair would schedule a special BOCC meeting, uh, on Monday, April the 4th, or May 4th, I'm sorry, at 1:00 PM.
Let me, uh, help you here, uh, I did talk to, uh, Kara, and I gave her the verbiage that Clint and I worked out for that meeting, so that, that'll help, um, and I haven't, and the reason we haven't discussed it any further is that we weren't sure where it was gonna be.
Right. So we'll schedule that meeting, uh, BOCC meeting on May the 4th at 1:00 PM. Uh, currently, the location is to be determined, uh, most likely at the Saddle Club building, but that has not been, uh, that decision has not been made. Uh, and that agenda item, Kara, would be executive session pertaining to strategic plans for broadband project.
And I, and she has the actual words with it, includes con, uh, strategic contract, uh, negotiation, instructions, et cetera, there's a couple, couple sentences there.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I have it.
Kara? Thank you, ma'am, appreciate that. So let the record show, a special BOCC meeting been scheduled for May the 4th at 1:00 PM. Okay, we'll move on. Uh, first item under new business, consideration of appointing the staff for the task force and goals and objectives, again, public comment, will be allowed, uh, at the conclusion of the commissioners' discussions on any action item, so, uh, Mr. Mogul, I would turn the floor over to you, sir.
Uh, well, as a result of our workshop, um, I think the open issue was, um, a principal of chairmanship and, um, our CCEDC, uh, I would accept as chairman and suggest that the co-chairman be Rick Mixtrup, and as a thought over the weekend, uh, another, the second co-chairman, uh, representative of the Chamber of Commerce.
Okay, uh, can I ask you a quick question, sir?
Certainly.
I missed the first, uh, suggestion of the co-chair, because I was, uh, dealing with a phone call, so could you repeat that, please?
That was, uh, Rick Mixtrup of-
Yes.
Economic Development, as, as the first co-chairman, and a second co-chairman, which we did not discuss Friday, but I'm suggesting that a representative of the Custer County Chamber of Commerce be a second.
Okay. Uh, by consent, gentlemen, or if there are no objections, chair would allow those two suggestions?
I'm okay with it.
Hearing, all right, hearing no objections, Mr. Mogul, I think you're, uh, good to proceed there. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. I think the, uh, we talked to goals and the, uh, uh, the mission, I believe that was without, um, suggested changes, and likewise, the, uh, structure of, of the 15 categories, um, I would suggest that, uh, you authorize that with, uh, allowing us to, uh, make categorical changes as that may, uh, look for.
Might wanna read those, just for the record, Charles, so that everybody is understanding what we're talking about, and then, uh-
Okay.
Go ahead.
Um, as proposed, um, we had, and part of this was because we don't know, uh, uh, haven't had an opportunity to discuss with public health, but we categorized the health community into two, one, which would be, uh, the health policy, uh, chances are, that would be, you know, public health office, uh, and office of emergency management, but then also a healthcare, those that would be, uh, uh, you know, involved in the public interface. We had, number three was restaurant owners, four lodging, five retail, six arts and entertainment, seven real estate, eight finance, nine utilities, 10 outdoor recreation, 11 destruction, 12 government, and, and that, if we have representatives, uh, up in the, uh, goals and missions of two towns, we may wanna modify that. Um, 13 was remote workers, 14 agriculture, and 15 nonprofits.
Okay.
And thank you. As of that, uh, the co-chairs and team members can identify other key members of the community and additional resources, uh, that might be identified, and we're already getting questions as to, you know, what, what group do I go into? That's my question.
Yeah, thanks for reading that, and, uh, I do think that if the mayors do need to participate, representatives of their community are great.
Now, that would be, uh, if you remember, that was up in the top of our, uh, goals and mission statement, uh-
That's right, yes.
And so we would, we would seek with, to the mayors to have them or a representative of their staff.
Can I make a comment, Clint?
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Charles, just for the, um, uh, benefit of the audience, could you please just briefly explain what the purpose of this, um, group of folks you're putting together as task force, what is their purpose?
Well, um, in, in cooperation and being kind of driven by the schedule that our health policy people, public health office and such would come up with, as far as the phasing, we'd wanna be sure that, um, that that information is, is disseminated throughout the community, and then, uh, within those guidelines, provide resources and assistance, so that our total community can best cope with the various phases of our recovery, is a 30,000-foot view of it.
Okay. Did I ask you a question, Mr. Prince?
Yes, sir, I think that's fine, I just wanted the community to know that we're not gonna be in a little vacuum, trying to determine how to, how we're gonna handle the reopening of the county, and that we have Economic Development helping us put together a group of folks that are gonna be involved with this, and it's not gonna be a bubble.
Yeah.
Yeah, I-
I think- Go ahead.
Excellent, yeah, that's an excellent point, uh, thanks, Tom, uh, to make, because we, it's important to have representatives of all aspects of our diverse county, and, uh, our goal, as Charles mentioned, is to get this recovery going and get us all back in business as soon as possible. Thanks.
Yep. So, I haven't gone that well, we don't have a set of minutes to check, I could ask Kelly, uh, I don't think we've actually had a formal motion then to, uh, approve the Economic Development Corporation moving forward with the documents that we looked at on Friday, so I would move that we authorize EDC to move forward in their efforts of the Economic Recovery Task Force.
And I'll second that.
We're moving to second, uh, to authorize, uh, EDC to move forward with their efforts on the task force, including their stated goals and objectives and the appropriate documents that we looked at during our workshop. Further discussion? Public comment? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Kanda? And Commissioner Power votes aye. Motion carries, uh, go forth and multiply, sir.
Well, there.
A question, Bob, this is Bob Sanderhoff asking.
Go ahead.
Um, on your task force, uh, Charles, uh, who do you have representing real estate?
Uh, as of right now, we've only identified the categories, uh, we'll start a discussion this afternoon, uh, as to the specifics. Are you volunteering, Bob?
Uh, yes, I am, uh, I'm a volunteer, yes.
Thank you.
And what time is your meeting this afternoon?
Uh, we've got a meeting of what I call a brain trust, which will be talking about this, and various things to progress, uh, starting about 3:15, but as we, uh, progress that, we're gonna split up the 15 amongst us, and we'll be making contacts after that, so, uh, really, uh, your time would be probably, uh, um, ill-advised to try to participate this afternoon, um, but, uh, contacts will be shortly thereafter.
All right, thank you, sir.
Is that gonna be by telephone?
Yes. Oh, by Zoom.
Uh, the meeting this afternoon, is that gonna be by phone, or who's gonna be in that meeting, and where is it gonna be?
It'll be by Zoom.
Charles, why don't you just give me a call after this, uh, meeting, shorten this up?
You try to-
You bet, Bob.
Thank you.
Further public comment? Hearing none, we proceed to vote, uh, all in favor of authorizing Economic Development Corporation to move forward with the Economic Recovery Task Force, say aye. Mr. Prince?
I might have said aye, but didn't we just do that?
Uh, we started to, and then we had, oh, I guess we did, and then Bob had a question afterwards, I'm sorry, yep, yep, it made me think we were back into public comment, so yes, we had already voted on that, sorry. So we'll move on. Uh, next item of business is consideration of a letter of commendation for public health and OEM discussion. I'll pull that up while we're-
Okay, I'll, I have a, a quick, uh, statement here, if you allow me to speak.
Yeah, go ahead, that was the intent, that if you had any additions or corrections to this letter, then we would entertain them at this meeting.
Right, and so I thought long and hard on this, uh, Tom, over the, since we brought it up, and, uh, and I, uh, I have come to a conclusion, and here's what it is, I believe it's premature, it's inappropriate at this time, and here's why. It's important to note that we are just now in the beginning of our recovery, that, as we've discussed, we have a lot more time activities, we'll test the mettle of not only our public health agency, but all who are serving our county citizens. Many of our employees are also executing their jobs in new ways, commendably under this new high pressure, different environment that we find ourselves in, the sheriff's department's a good example, the clerk and her crew, uh, our zoning and septic inspections are enabling, you know, our limited economy to continue, the road and bridge guys are out on the forefront of the fight here as well, within the time that we've been operating unlimitedly, the landfill team and a lot of others. So all, I wanna stress this, all of our employees are doing what they were either elected or hired to do, and so therefore, I would really recommend that we revisit this at an appropriate time and recognize all who had a significant impact in our fight when this war in our county- and recognize all who had a significant impact in our fight when this war in our county with this invisible enemy. So, that's, uh, where I am.
Okay. Thank you. We don't have a motion on the floor, so we're a little out of sync here, but I think the chair will allow it.
I would have a comment, sir.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, to help. Commissioner Kenda, I absolutely agree with what you're saying, that we were all thrust into this. And every area of the county, every county employee, to the best of my knowledge, has done everything they can to make this, uh, as palatable as possible, what's going on. However, I feel that the Office of Emergency Management, the Public Health Director, were thrust into an area that is totally uncharted water, acted with what they believed at the time to be their authority, and we've since corrected that with their concurrence and assistance. Uh, they took on the task of, um, taking the county with the state recommendations, keep it as safe as possible. I think they, uh, went way above and beyond the line of duty in terms of jumping in and taking care of what we do. And I think a letter of commendation to everybody is certainly in order. However, I think a separate one to OEM, the Public Health Nurse, considering what they have done to get us to this point, keep our exposure rate as low as it is. I personally feel we should commendate them and give them a recommendation, a commendation, I mean, I'm sorry, I said that wrong, a commendation for an outstanding job up to this point. That's my opinion.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, I would move that we publish the proposed, uh, letter of support as a press release from the B O C C.
I'll second it.
The move is seconded to publish, uh, the letter from the Board of County Commissioners, uh, letter of support from the Board of County Commissioners pertaining to public health and OEM. Further discussion?
This is this bill, I'll still stand by what I said. And I didn't mean that every week has, uh, has, has done commitment, the outstanding work is, you know, commendable. I, I, I meant that to mean that we need to understand what the impacts really are, the significant ones. And so I still stand by that. I think it's immature and I, I didn't, or immature and inappropriate at this point. Thanks.
Okay. Further discussion? Public comment?
Um, Bob Cinderhoff comment? You know, I think what, uh, Bill has just said, uh, really, we should give a little bit more consideration to that. Personally, I feel as though, you know, the, uh, people in the medical field have done an outstanding job. There's no question about that. But I'm just wondering, you know, we're going to be going on with this issue, you know, maybe for another week or two, maybe a month, maybe longer. And there may be other things that may come up that may just be as important and can identify and help, you know, the medical side of it a little bit more. I think a letter thanking or accommodation for everybody, your entire team up there is, is, would be great at this time, but I think a letter of commendation come, should come at the, uh, end, uh, for the medical staff. End of comment.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Further public comment?
This is Alyssa, I've been good.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I, as this letter is written to Meredith and myself, I just want to throw out there right now that it is apparent and abundantly clear to us who is supporting us and who is not supporting us. We know that in our hearts of hearts. We know where the support is coming from in this community and who the lack of support, I guess, if you will, is, is also comes from. And so at this point, if it's such a thing to make this big deal over, we appreciate tremendously the letter and the accommodation, um, but just know that we know who supports us and those are the people and the entities that keep us doing what we're doing and hopefully keeping this community safe. And the naysayers, there will always be naysayers and we can't perform based on that. We will just have to do what is best for the community, doing the best we can. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. I guess I'll respond. I know this, any further public comments? Sorry, I'll wait. Okay, hearing none, um.
I guess I have to make a comment for that. Um, this is Bob again. And, uh, I, you know, I, I support the medical folks a hundred percent. I don't know who you're referring to, you know, the naysayers, you know, there may be a couple in the community, but I'll tell you, the majority of all the business people and the people of the community are in a hundred percent support of what you're doing. And I just hope that, uh, by me making my comments, you don't construe that as being negative.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Uh, I'm going to throw out a couple of observations. Uh, one in response to Mr. Cinderhoff with respect, sir, uh, Public Health and OEM have been hammered by business owners in this county. They continue to get hammered every day because they feel like they're, uh, overstepping their bounds, they're working outside of their scope, they're, uh, they're just under an onslaught. The intent and the purpose for drafting this letter was so that the county commissioners could indicate that we do support public health and OEM. It is not to detract from anyone else. I can assure you, in my opinion, uh, this is not directed to Mr. Cinderhoff necessarily. Uh, there is no one in this county that has spent more hours on the job dealing with the COVID-19 pandemic than the Public Health, uh, Agency and the Office of Emergency Management. The landfill continues to do their job and, and does it exemplary, as does every other division of our county. That is not the point. Uh, the point was to indicate, uh, support publicly so that people will understand that the commissioners do support what the Public Health Agency and the Office of Emergency Management has been doing. I don't read anything else into this letter other than that. So, if this comes to a motion, I will vote in favor of it. I can tell you that because I think these folks need a positive statement from the county commissioners, uh, put out in the form of a press release. Further public comment?
Um, anything else?
Go ahead.
Uh, Chairman Flower? Sorry, this is, this is Elliot. And I'm just speaking as a citizen here, not representing the Tribune. I absolutely one hundred percent agree with you and I applaud you for that sentiment. I really hope you guys go ahead and do this.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. Commissioner Kenda?
Yeah, just one last point. I had no, it is no inference here that I wasn't in support of our public health, uh, that are doing their job, that we expect them to do and that they're qualified to do, and that's what they're doing. Uh, my point was not to be, uh, belaborative and send mixed messages to the community because there are different opinions. And I don't think it's, uh, appropriate personally to try to, um, politicize it, maybe one way of putting it. Uh, I think we've got our heads down, we're doing a good job, cresting down the road because I think this is just, uh, beating a dead horse here. I, I, I believe that, just as you said, Tom, we've got a lot of people that are going above and beyond. And I understand the, uh, need to put out a press release, and I think that's okay. Put out a press release, uh, it includes the opening of the, uh, of the, uh, county building. We're moving ahead and that's a, a good thing to say. Thanks, uh, Public Health Agency and the people in it were able to do that. But I think it's inappropriate, as I mentioned, to single out, uh, and I, and I agree with Alyssa. Um, you know, the, you know, the, the team that's putting this together, uh, it's bigger than that. So I would object to it, as I said, the way it's stated today. So, and all I've got is this, uh, thing.
You bet. Further discussion from the B O C C? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of releasing a public, uh, press release, uh, the letter submitted for the, uh, letter of support to Public Health and OEM, say aye.
Is it a letter of support or commendation? How did you say it?
Uh, it is not titled anything. Uh, the letter, uh, the key sentence, to answer your question, sir, the Board of County Commissioners is in full support of the Public Health Director and Emergency Manager who are leading the county's response to COVID-19.
That was going to say, I thought you were going to put a letter out.
Okay, I thought you had just asked me, was it a letter of support or a letter of commendation? Commissioner Prince added the word commendation at our last meeting. I just read that the intent here is in full support. The word commendation never appears in this letter.
Okay.
That's why I referred to it as a letter of support. Commissioner Prince, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Commissioner Kenda?
Nay.
Commissioner Flower votes aye. Uh, motion passes. Two in favor, one opposed. Uh, we have not specifically spoken to the press release and its publication. Uh, I'm going to ask if by consent that the intent here was to be published in the, uh, newspaper of record. Any objection to that?
No.
Okay, motion carries. We will publish this letter, uh, as a press release in the, uh, newspaper of record. Thank you. Hold on, just a second, gentlemen, let me get back to my agenda. Uh, next item of business, consideration of the Justice Center RFP responses. Uh, to my knowledge, we've had one, uh, company respond to the RFP concerning the Justice Center. I believe, gentlemen, you have that in your possession?
I do. I've got it.
Okay. Uh, I, I want to be careful here, um, I just don't want to blurt out the name of the company. The deadline for the submission of this RFP has come and gone. Uh, again, that was submitted electronically. Uh, Counselor Smith, would look to you for some direction here on how you feel is best appropriate to move forward.
I'm looking for that. I'm not sure I got it or if I did, I may have deleted it.
Uh, yeah, uh, you may not have. Would have to ask Ms. Carra if she sent you a copy of that. Um, the deadline, um, let me look, I'm just checking my documents here. The deadline for the response, uh, April the 10th. Uh, we were supposed to have a, uh, review April 17th. That obviously postponed due to COVID. And so I think, uh, we had initially set up, obviously, gentlemen, you understand, this whole timeline kind of went south on us, but, uh, we were hoping to make a decision around the, uh, April 27th to May 1. The RFP said a final decision would be announced May 1, as soon or as possible. So, uh, I would suggest maybe that we also take a hard look at this about putting it on the agenda and making a decision on the, uh, submittals on the May 5th meeting. Comments about that?
I think that's a perfect idea.
Okay.
I, I like Prince. Thanks, sir. I, I like the idea of putting it on May 5th. Um, since the deadline is coming past, is it appropriate for counsel to read the sole, sole, um, submittal that we received?
Uh, if we're going to put it on the May 5th agenda, I'd prefer to wait until then. If you want to deal with it today, we could certainly do that.
I'm going to need somebody to send it to me if I'm going to read it, so I just assume.
Right.
May 5th.
Yeah, I, that's the way I feel, Jay, is maybe just, just stick it on the agenda for May 5th, if that's all right.
And I'm fine with that. I would just like to read it and absorb it, think about the proposal before I vote on it. So if it's possible, see it ahead of time, if, if that's appropriate. If it's not appropriate, I'll deal with it on May 5th, hear it for the first time and vote at that point, at that moment.
Can you, you have an opinion on that?
Um, since it's the only one we got, I guess it doesn't matter. I, I, it was my understanding that it was already disseminated to the commissioners, but if not, I'd say.
It was.
Okay. Well, I guess Jay didn't get it.
I do not have it. I, I've looked multiple times. If Carra, if you would email it to me, I'm fine and we'll do it on May 5th.
And me also.
Okay, I sure will.
Thank you very much, sir. I'm fine. I have no objections.
Okay. So, Carra, I would ask that you include on the May 5th agenda, uh, consideration of selecting a, uh, I guess at this point we'll call it a contractor to, uh, move forward with the Justice Center project.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, next item of business, uh, consideration of amending the landfill RFP. Uh, we've already had some discussion about this, so I guess my question would be, gentlemen, do you feel like we need to extend the date, uh, the, uh, deadline for submission?
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I truly feel that it's too late for us to do anything with it. We gave a deadline, we gave requirements, multiple companies responded to it. I think we live with what we got and move forward based upon the proposals that we received.
Commissioner Kenda?
Yeah, I'm of like mind. How many do we actually end up with? It sounds like, uh.
As I, as I indicated earlier, we don't know for sure, but we believe there's five or six. The deadline is at four P M. today.
Yeah, it was five or six. Uh, so I, I'm good with leaving it like it is.
Okay, does the, uh, does the B O C C care to make any act or take any action on this agenda item? If not, we will move on. Commissioner Prince?
I, I would like to take no action on this item.
Commissioner Kenda?
Ditto.
Uh, and I am of the like opinion there, so we will move on. No action on consideration of amending the landfill RFP. Next item of business, consideration of waiving the conflict of interest for the attorney to serve as the B O C C attorney as well as the Board of Health attorney. Gentlemen, you, we have received an email from Attorney Smith speaking to that. Um, uh, I would move that we waive any claim of conflict of interest for Attorney Smith serving as the attorney for the B O C C and the Board of Health.
I'll second it.
Thank you. The move is seconded that we waive any claim of conflict of interest, uh, discussion. So, Attorney Smith, I do have a question. Um, you had cited, uh, some Colorado court rules, but I didn't see any specific citation, only that it was as amended through Rule Change 2018 Sub 6. Is that out of a court document or is that, uh, Colorado revised statutes?
Uh, the rules of, uh, procedure and the rules relating to attorney conduct are in the Colorado revised statutes. It's not a. It's not a, uh, it doesn't have a statutory citation, but it's in there.
Okay, all right. And then you had made, uh, specific mention of, uh, item number four, each affected client gives informed consent confirmed in writing. Obviously, if this motion passes, then that would serve as, uh, a written confirmation from the B O C C. Is that correct?
That's correct. Um, it's a public record, and if there was ever an issue about it, it's, it would be in the minutes of this meeting, and the Board of Health has already, uh, approved this, so it would be in that, those minutes also.
Thank you, sir.
Clint?
Uh, for.
Yes.
Further discussion? Go ahead, Kelly.
Can you send me a copy of that letter so I can have it in my records?
Yeah, I can do it right now if you want. I've got it.
Okay, I'll let Tom do it.
Up to you, Clint. Okay. You don't wanna done matter.
Just send.
Do that while we're.
Email.
Okay. Give me just a second. All right, Ms. Kelly, that has been done.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, public comment? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of waiving, uh, claim of conflict of interest for county attorney, say aye. Commissioner Prince?
Aye.
Commissioner Kenda?
Aye.
And Chairman Flower votes aye as well. Motion carries. Uh, thank you, appreciate that. Next item of business, a discussion of the partial reopening of the courthouse. Uh, I asked to put this on here so that at least, gentlemen, we could continue the discussion, um, and so I, obviously, the governor came out with his new executive order 2020 dash 44 yesterday. Uh, I, I would just like to have a discussion about where we feel the courthouse needs to go, uh, moving forward here. I think we have to recognize that, uh, the latest order, uh, you know, I think we need to be in compliance with that, uh, utilizing P P E and social distancing, P P E, including some kind of face covering and, and gloves. Um, he spoke about age 65 and older being a vulnerable, uh, population in the workforce. I think we need to consider that, uh, and those folks maybe could continue to work remotely, and then we have to have less than pe, 10 people in any one place, so, uh, and then we had some discussion the other day about maybe moving to an appointment-only, uh, procedure to let the elected officials deal with their offices. Discussion.
Uh, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Um, I, I reached out to several of the communities about what they're doing about their courthouse. Uh, what I thought would be appropriate, if we had a big sign on the door, do not enter unless you have, uh, uh, some kind of protective covering over your face, so anybody who comes in must abide by that, or they're not allowed in. Um, all, everybody that I spoke to, it'd be Fremont, J.C., um, I spoke to, uh, one other, and I can't remember what it was. Anyway, um, they all are doing this by appointment only, um, make an appointment, they're leaving, um, they're, they're scheduling those based upon the timeframe, that normal transaction that they're coming in for would take. Um, so I, I think, I, my question was, is it working? And most of them said, it is, although there's some overlap, and some smaller issues that they deal with, on a case-by-case basis. But I would recommend that, um, we follow that suit and make sure that everybody who comes in has the proper, uh, face covering, um, and do this by, um, uh, telephone appointment. Um, I suggested at one of our previous meetings that maybe Kara could be the, if she's willing and if we're willing, could be the, um, scheduler, um, and she could be in contact with the different areas within the county to help work that through. So that's my comment, and I, I like the idea of opening it. I think we need to. The people are waiting, they expect it, and I think we just need to do it, um, appropriately. And I'd like to hear from Alyssa on what her thoughts are.
Okay. Commissioner Candace?
Yeah, I've got, uh, let Alyssa speak first. I'm just, uh, I, I'm gonna forward to you all the Fremont County, uh, press releases, pretty good model that I've got here, and I'll, and then we can talk some more, and Alyssa.
Um, Ms. Lavagood?
Yeah, um, so first of all, we have to be at least compliant with the safer-at-home order, or we will not get funding from COVID-19 grants. So I just wanna throw that out there. Um, that being said, I think it's a great idea to make sure everyone that comes in the courthouse wears a mask, at least, and gloves if possible. Um, that, that would be like a little bit more strict than what the actual safer-at-home order is, which is perfectly fine, we can absolutely do that. Um, appointments are also, I think, a great idea, and that, that, I think that's gonna be our best bet as far as keeping people from congregating outside the offices, like the clerk and recorder specifically, and the, um, the treasurer. Um, my suggestion would be to have each department do their own scheduling, um, mostly just because people might have questions that Kara might not be privy to the answers, and it might just be easier for them to talk to the people who they need to deal with. So, and possibly, they could have the business done over the phone instead of having to come in. If they talk to the people in the department, maybe there's something that, you know, doesn't require their actual presence. So, anyway, just my thoughts on that. Um, but I agree completely with the mask. I, I'm not sure, um, if we, if we mandate that the public wear masks in, we might have to provide them for them if they don't have them. So we might look at that, um, but that's something we can press every one to get through. So, that's all. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. You, you have received the, uh, copy, I sense, then.
Okay, I would like to respond to a couple comments that Alyssa made. Uh, I agree, if we're gonna require them to have P P E, uh, then we may have to provide that. Secondly, I think, uh, we need to look at if, if our employees are gonna be dealing with the public face-to-face, that we might need to look at what we're gonna require for P P E on their behalf as well. So I think that needs to enter into the conversation. Uh, I agree with, uh, Alyssa. I think the individual offices should do their own scheduling, and for the same reasons that she pointed out. Uh, also, I think that each office has been instructed to develop a recovery plan or a reopening plan. I know, uh, that Kelly is working on hers, and the Human Services Office is working on theirs as well. So, Alyssa, I would ask, do we need to get plans from each office, uh, so that you know how they're going to handle this, uh, partial reopening?
Hey, guys, it's Meredith. Um, yeah, so I've talked a lot with Kelly and then also Human Services, and I feel very comfortable in what measures they put in place. Um, they're, they're looking through the right things, and I did ask them to, um, send me whatever they have, whenever it's finished, so that we can either double-check it, make sure it's addressing the right thing, including per the safer-at-home order, um, critical or essential business, and it is people who are working with the public, you have to wear masks and gloves. So that is the P P E that our employees in the, in the county building would have to wear.
Okay, uh, just a point of clarification, Meredith, by my end, uh, when we say mask, are we talking about face coverings, or are you talking about a mask?
Face covering, sorry, yeah.
Okay, that's all right, I just wanna make.
Yeah, it could be, um, like a handmade mask, to be, uh, sever, fine, yeah.
Non-surgical face covering, then?
Yeah, there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I got it.
Kenda?
Yeah, real quick, I wanna remind you, uh, that it's not just the courthouse, it's all county buildings, uh, and so that's, that's the, in line, uh, I believe. And I think, uh, the mask, uh, the appointments is, is critical, and that all doors would remain locked, as, as even Fremont County has pointed out, physical distancing and all that take place, and that, uh, we can't allow people to wander the halls.
So to that point, it's Meredith. Um, Kelly and I've kinda talked through this, um, it's, and it would be my recommendation that, um, all doors be locked, only people with appointments come in. Um, people that are coming in for the treasurer's office or upstairs, sort of the front door, uh, people needing Human Services or Clerk's Office goes to the back door, um, they could utilize the, um, cell, so if that they're there, if they don't have cell phone service, they don't have a cell, then they can notify that they're there. Um, and if they're late, then you need a reschedule. Um, and then also, if you're coming into the, the county building for multiple offices, um, then you schedule two appointments. So, um, um, does that make sense?
Yes. Yes, it does, and I think that the, uh, the supervisors of those offices need to make sure that they abide by those directions, that they're not just gonna randomly take a, another walk-in appointment because they were in the courthouse doing some other business. To Commissioner Candace's point, um, we're talking about the courthouse, not other offices. Now, that doesn't mean we can't have a discussion about other offices, but the agenda item was for the courthouse.
Right, but I, uh, I don't know why, and if it's out of order to have another meeting to discuss that, that's fine, but I believe it applies to all county buildings personally. Should, should apply, I mean, if there's a, somebody wants to see the fire chief in his building, or the Roden Bridge guys, or the SAR people, or whoever.
Yeah, we don't have any authority over the fire department by any means, but I get it.
I would talk to.
That.
Large. I could.
Go ahead.
I could, I could come up with Commissioner Candace, I think this should not be just the county, the, the courthouse, it should be all county buildings that are under our control.
Right.
That, that is the E O C's recommendation as well.
Okay, so that would, uh, apply to the airport, the search and rescue, um, public health.
Road and Bridge.
Uh, and Roden Bridge, is that correct?
Um, how about, uh, Kara's?
Well.
Uh, sorry, go ahead again, Commissioner Prince, I, you either broke up, or?
I, I stepped on.
Sorry. Uh, no problem, no problem. It was very difficult, oh, the phone, and we're doing the best we can. I'm thinking also John Carroll's office, V S O probably needs to.
Yes, thank you, yep. So Roden Bridge Airport, Sheriff's Office, Search and Rescue, V S O, courthouse. Yes, gotta go ahead.
You might wanna, um, since it's kinda been an issue lately, the, refer to the courthouse as county building, since the courthouse part is sort of separate.
Yes, that was a misnomer on my part, I apologize for even putting it on the agenda as courthouse, should have been county building or county offices. In this case, we're talking about county building slash office, is that correct, gentlemen?
Yeah, that's how I understand it.
Okay, so Roden Bridge, Airport, Sheriff's Office, Search and Rescue, V S O, and the county building. Any others I'm missing here?
Mr. Chairman, um.
Yes.
Thank you, I'm, I'm just a little concerned about the Sheriff's Office, because it's such a different atmosphere, maybe we oughta have the sheriff weigh in on how he feels it'd be appropriate, and he could meet with Alyssa and Meredith and come up with a plan that may be slightly different with them.
Yeah, I, that's a great point, and I'm a little uncomfortable with drawing the Sheriff's Office in on this list as well, because they're totally different set of circumstances. Um, I guess I would defer to Alyssa or Meredith for comments here.
I mean, if we're gonna set a precedent that county offices have to have, um, masks and not ask any other elected official about it, I feel like it should go for the Sheriff's Office as well.
Hey, I, if I may, sir, my, I was not concerned about the mask, I was more concerned about calling and scheduling ahead of time. Um, I just, I, I just feel comf, more comfortable if we could have the sheriff maybe agree with, uh, Meredith and Alyssa on what the proper protocol is, and I would go along with their decision.
With that understood.
Uh, could you repeat, please?
So, um, about the appointments and things like that, we can definitely talk to him, and I thought you were just referring to masks.
Uh, no, it's all of it, I think, is my, at least my assumption, and we're discussing about all of it, because I, you know, it's not gonna be, it's not even reasonable to think that somebody's gonna make an appointment to go into the Sheriff's Office to file a, uh, some kind of a complaint or whatever, so I would agree that maybe the Sheriff's Office needs to be dealt with a little differently, uh, versus other offices.
Yeah, definitely, um, I'll, I can talk to him today and see how he wants to go about it.
Okay, uh, and I would assume that you would also present him our, uh, direction, directives to the other offices, so he knows what's going on.
Get there. It's great comment.
Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, I think, um, that, you know, he needs to come up with his own con op for sure, uh, and this, uh, because they're, as well as should, the courts shouldn't they as well? You know, I mean, they're gonna be scheduling things on their own, so.
Yes, I believe they've already submitted their plan to, uh, Public Health.
Okay, if that's the case, then shouldn't that be on the announcement too, is my point?
Yeah, I mean, we go back. Right, we go back to that whole idea that, uh, everybody was asked to submit a plan.
Right.
To the public health agency, yeah. So, a good discussion, I mean, that was the whole intent, when I put this on the agenda, that we could just kinda massage this a little bit, and, uh, and not everybody's gonna be treated exactly the same way. That's ludicrous to think that we could throw a blanket over everybody, because, uh, everyone has a few different issues and, and protocols in place, but I think generally, if we, uh, try to move forward and, and allow people face-to-face in that courthouse if they feel like they need it, uh, I think everybody in there's done a great job of dealing with it, uh, over the phone, or out, uh, remotely, whatever that looks like, but, uh, I agree to that.
Good question.
Go ahead.
Good question, who's gonna write the press release? We need to pull together all these ideas and get it written down.
This is Meredith.
Go ahead.
We have a, we have a P I O, so that would be my suggestion.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, um, and then I would assume you will run any of that by us before it goes to the press.
Yeah, um, I will, we'll push it out to the, um, to everyone that it, uh, to the Board of County Commissioners and to the department heads to ensure that all their information is correct, and then push that out to the public.
Okay.
Good deal.
Okay. Question? I'm not in favor of unlocking the doors at the county building, I just think we're, if we, if we unlock it, then we're gonna have to man those, and we just do not have the personnel to do that, so, uh.
I, I thought we were locking them, who said we shouldn't?
Well, Jay had indicated, maybe we could unlock it and, uh, I don't agree with that, is all I'm saying.
I have a question?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
We really can't vote on it since it's just a discussion item on the agenda, um, can we, can we put a tentative date of this, uh, reopening off on April 30th, and put it on the April 30th agenda so that we can vote on it?
That's a great question, I guess I would defer back to Public Health and O E M. I'd like to see whatever, uh, is going out before it goes to press.
Well, that's. Let's have a quick discussion on that, because I think the sooner the better. And maybe Clint, we're all, we're all in a great emergency condition. I don't know why we wouldn't, this is not a, you know, we should be able to coordinate this, whatever the rough draft is, and agree that we, by some method, or, you know, whatever we think would be best. I think the sooner the better. I'm going to be clamoring for it.
Hey, well, today's Monday, Jay suggested, look at that on, sorry, I apologize, I'm on the wrong, wrong deal. Well, today is Monday, but, um, so we'd be on the 30th, it'd be Thursday.
And this is, the point is, it'll miss the newspapers. If we do it today or tomorrow, we can get it out to everybody.
Hey, this is Meredith. Can I jump in?
Yes, please.
So, so per our timeline, May 4th is when the county building will be open to the public. So we can get it to, we can get it out before then. And as long as I get everyone's plan from, a finalized plan from each department, then we can push it out whenever. It would be the same format as all of our press releases that we pushed out. So I don't, I don't know why I would have to go back to discussion, in my opinion.
I don't either. I don't either.
Well, just a point of order, it's not a, if we're going to vote on it, we can't do it today. If we're just going to acquiesce and say, "The public health handled it," then I don't have an issue. But I thought we decided we wanted to review everything that goes out, as the board of health, when we are in board of health, and the press releases that go out. So I'm questioning the methodology of doing this.
Well, Jay, that's a good point. But we're, the county buildings are in the auspices of the county commissioners, and I think that's fair to put out as a, from a county point of view. So, what do you think? Clint, you got an idea there?
Yeah, I don't think this is the kind of thing that necessarily requires a motion to vote on. It's, I mean, this is just an administrative decision that you're making. And I think you could make this decision without having it on as an agenda item. It's, I mean, to me, it's not something that is, well, I maybe, I probably should change that and say, "Yeah, if you're going to vote, put it on the agenda."
Well, I agree with that statement, Clint. I wasn't anticipating a vote. I wanted this discussion, and if public health thinks that's the way to go, then certainly I'm fine with them moving forward.
As long as, and they've stated already, which is a given, it's going to be coordinated. We're not going to put out, the departments and the commissioners aren't in concurrence with. So I think we're in good shape. It isn't administrative.
Any other discussion on this?
Tom?
Yes?
So, I don't remember what meeting it was at, that you guys made a motion that the county building would open back up to customers May 4th. And so that's kind of what we've been planning on and working all our stuff around. And that's what we've been letting people know when they call. And I think if you, if you would vote on the 30th to open on the 30th, that's only Thursday and Friday, and we open, I mean, you would, that's only, you only gain two days. And I don't feel like we're really prepared right now to open back up. But we will be prepared by Monday.
Okay, Kelly?
Yeah, it's a good point, Kelly. I thought we were all on the same sheet. The press release is going to state that the date that we open is May, whatever it is, 4th. And everybody's planning towards it. And here's what is expected when we open, you know, pretty straightforward. That's what we'll coordinate anyway.
Yeah, I, I guess I would say, when we talk about reopening now, we're talking about reopening by appointment only and the stuff we've just discussed, right? We're not going to throw the doors open. Is that clear? Am I clear on that?
Yeah, we're all clear.
Okay, all right. So it's a partial reopening of the county buildings, correct? County offices?
On May 4th, correct, under the circumstances that we've discussed?
I agree. Meredith, you want to weigh in on that? We good?
Yeah, that's exactly what it will be. I already have, I have a draft reopening press release that we've had, I've had for a couple of weeks now, since it divided May 4th would be the time that reopened. So what I'll do is put in the appointment only, our recommendations, make sure that, I'll email it to each department head, see if they're on board for that, and then give their edits, their comments, and then send it to the board of county commissioners, to make sure that they're okay with it, and then we can push it out. Does that work for everyone?
And if it does, here's my recommendation. I'd like to see the coordination personally in time to get it into the all media that we can, so that everybody knows what's going to happen on 4th. Get it into the newspapers, for example, as quick as we can.
So would that be by tomorrow?
No, I think headlines are as late as tomorrow afternoon. I know Tribune has taken things on Wednesday morning, but that's pretty late. But that's something to coordinate. Let Elliot handle that.
Well, my opinion is, certainly needs to go in our paper of record, for sure.
I agree with that.
So yeah, Meredith, if that's, if you think that's doable, let's try to move forward with that, okay?
I'm good.
And do we need anything on the agenda for April 30th to make a formal vote?
I thought I said-
Somebody said something. I couldn't determine who it was.
You first, Jay. I heard you.
Sorry, Phil. I didn't mean to walk all over you. Now, I don't think we need to. I think we've come to a consensus administratively just now, and I'm fine with it.
As am I. Mr. Candace?
I am here.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thanks, Meredith. Appreciate you doing that. I just want to make a quick statement here, that department heads and elected officials may not be the same individuals. Department heads of county offices, not elected officials, not going to have a lot of say-so in this. That's, the commissioners will make that decision for them. Elected officials, of course, certainly get their, you know, I think it's just a little different entity there. Okay, if there's no other discussion about that, we will move on. Consideration, approving a Custer County CCEDC MOU agreement is the next item of new business. What's a group's pleasure?
Yes. I apologize. I didn't jump in fast enough. I think we should discuss on the partial reopening, commission meetings with proper distancing. Is that something we consider to start on May 4th also?
Well, given the grief we've had in the past, I'm not in favor of it, Jay.
I am in favor of it, Mr. Jay. I think it's a good thing to do. We don't have to meet in that BOCC room either to do that. We could get into a larger room, maybe the VSO office or whatever, that we could look into. I think it's a good thing to get back face-to-face. And I know that other commissioners are doing that in our neighboring counties already. I think it's a good thing.
Would you like to put that on an agenda item, sir?
Yeah, why don't, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I would like to put that on the April 30th meeting agenda, that we consider live BOCC meetings in lieu of telephonically.
Okay, Eric?
I got it.
Mr. Candace?
I'm good, thanks.
Very good. Okay, group's pleasure, the MOU agreement?
I move that we approve the modified CCEDC MOU with BOCC, the latest version that was presented to us.
I'll second it.
I'm being seconded to approve the MOU between the BOCC and the CCEDC discussion. Public comment? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye. Commissioner Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Candace?
Aye.
And Commissioner Flower votes aye as well. Motion carries that MOU has been approved. I want to thank Commissioner Candace for his work on drafting that, and Attorney Smith as well. Guys did a good job.
Can someone please send me a copy of that?
Candace, would you do that, please?
I remember, right, I think the last one that Leguiz, he just simply added our suggestion changes at the bottom, so there's probably still an incorporation for-
I can send it to Kelly now.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. You know what, just for after, Clint, if you would send that to Charles and the three commissioners as well, then we all know we've got the latest document.
Okay, I'll do it right now.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. We'll move on then, approval of the Task 1 procurement package. Group's pleasure?
I'll go to open a discussion. I move that we approve the Task 1 procurement package as presented.
I'll second that motion. Been moved and seconded to approve the procurement, Task 1 procurement package discussion.
Yeah, can you send me, I don't find it. I don't have the latest version of whatever.
There should have been an email submitted with attachments about 1:05 PM on Saturday that included the incorporation of the changes in the professional services agreement, as well as the change, the statement of word, and the typical letter of instructions, letter of intent were unchanged.
That would be, Charles, that Friday, you said it by something?
No, it was, the summary of the changes was submitted at Saturday at 1:05 PM.
And if you can't, it came from Dale Mullin, not CCEDC?
Ah, right, fine. All right, so what's it called?
Uh, CCBOCC Workshop SSC, Inc., action item, professional service agreement update.
Okay, I got it. All right, I found, oh, Project 1, right.
Further discussion? Public comment? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of approving the Task 1 procurement package, say aye. Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Candace?
I'll say aye. I haven't had a chance to digest it yet, but I'm going to go along with it. And if I find something, I'll bring it up, and we'll move on it separately.
And Chairman Flower votes aye. Motion carries. The we just presented by the BOCC, or by the CCEDC, carries.
Chairman, Mr. Charles Vogel, I'm really sure that it's understood that also included as item 5, that we were given authority to execute a, proceed with the contractor?
You cut out, Charles.
I said, item 5 on that package indicates that we were, are given a approval to execute a notice to proceed on Project 1 with our SSC.
Oh, that's correct. That was going to be funded out of a different fund, correct?
Right, that'll be funded out of the $10,000 that was, has been deposited by Economic Development, yes.
Yeah, that was my assumption. That's how I was going to vote, that we already talked about that.
Right, okay. Just wanted to be sure. Thank you.
Yeah, no, thanks for the point of clarification.
And can, can someone send me the procurement package, because I didn't get Dale's email?
Okay, I can forward it to you.
Thank you.
Charles, do you want to do that?
I can do that. That's to the register. Yeah, she was not included in there.
Yeah, to Kelly. Any further public comment? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All in favor of approving Task 1 procurement, say aye. Mr. Prince?
Aye. They already voted.
Kelly voted.
Yeah, these, uh, follow-up conversations get me to thinking we were still in public comment. My apologies. Hey, any additional items of business come before the board, gentlemen?
Not for me, sir.
Mr. Candace?
Negative.
Nor do I. Public comment? Anything any of the listeners want to discuss, have a comment about? Hearing none, without objections, Chair will adjourn the meeting. Let the record show today is April 27, 2020. The time is 11:07 AM. Thank you all for joining. Meeting is adjourned.